A family-owned shop in Loganville, Sosby's Garage for all your automotive repair needs. We service all makes and models, foreign and domestic. We repair engines, alternators, brakes, alignments, AC systems, and more. Using certified technicians with over 90 years of combined experience. We also offer same-day service for some repairs. Sosby's Garage, 200 Bay Creek Road in Loganville. Dependable, honest, and fair. Look us up on Google or Facebook. We'll take good care of you.
Broadcasting live from the Subaru of Gwinnett Studio inside the Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel, it's time for Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services. We are the cornerstone of security in the southeast.
Hey, everybody. I'm your host, Rick Strong. Welcome to Case in Point presented by Paradigm Security Services. We're excited today to be with you on Business Radio X. We're coming to you from the Subaru of Gwinnett Studio located at the beautiful Sonesta Gwinnett Place Atlanta Hotel in Duluth, Georgia. Each week, we plan to feature businesses in the Atlanta area and people in the Gwinnett area, especially those that serve in our area. I would like you to please go and subscribe to this website wherever you are, whatever podcast you're on, iTunes, any of them, and hit that subscribe button so that we can all know that you've been there and it'd give me a little kick. So while all businesses have security concerns, not all are about physical security, and we will touch on that and all related aspects of security through the course of each show, today might be even more security-oriented a little bit along with the political end of it. I am happy to have as my guest Mr., let's see, what was his name? David Post. He is running for the county commission seat chair and as well as he is owner of Future Security and Management Company. He's been owner of that for a long time. I've known Dave for a lot longer than I'll admit to, but happy to have you here, Dave.
It's good to be here, Rick.
I appreciate you coming on. You know, there's a lot going on, but I always like to start with, who is David Post? Where'd you come from? Where were you born? How'd you get to where you are in security business?
And all that stuff.
And all that stuff, getting into politics, man.
Well, I was born in Akron, Ohio in 1946.
Damn year old.
I'm supposed to tell you how old I am, right? And my father was an Akron police officer. And after he got out of police work, he started a grocery store business. And when I was 10 years old, I was running the cash register. It was a great business, but he died when I was 13. And it was very difficult for my mother to run that store, and obviously I was too young to do it. And the one thing that I remember is when we had to sell the store, we're cleaning things out, and they found all kinds of cigar boxes. And it turns out that the cigar boxes were full of bills because he was feeding the neighborhood. My father was a Golden Gloves champion, played semi-pro football with the only semi-pro team that ever went three years in a row and lost one game. He was a tough guy, but he had a heart of gold. And that's probably why he was feeding the neighborhood. And one thing that I learned from that, and I've never forgot, is that as good as you are, you have to make sure you don't give away the farm.
Yep.
So I grew up, I went to University of Akron. I was a psychology major. I went to work for the Summit County Sheriff's Department, and I was a security or a communications supervisor. And when I was on the way to, I decided I wanted to get into police work. So the Lake City, Florida Police Department was waiting for me. I stopped in Atlanta to visit my older brother, decided I really liked it here, called Lake City up, told them that I wasn't coming, moved to Atlanta. For the first year, I did psychiatric work, working with drug addicts, problem kids, alcoholics. As a matter of fact, I opened up an alcohol unit for the company that I was working with. And while I was looking around, I finally went full-time with the City of Roswell Police Department. And in '72, I started my security management and consulting business. And it got so busy that in '73, I had to quit the police department. I was full-time in the security business. In late '74, I got sworn in as a reserve deputy with the Gwinnett Sheriff's Department. And I just, they just retired me about two months ago. I'm the longest-running reserve deputy probably in the southeast, almost 47 years.
That's a, that's a long time in that type of business.
It is. It's a long time, but I enjoyed it.
That's a little bit about your background and what brought you into it. I guess the next obvious question is, why do you want to be chairman of the Gwinnett County Commission?
Well, you know, I had a reporter ask me that same question, and I said, "I don't." And he kind of looked at me funny, and I said, "Do soldiers want to go to war? You know, do firemen want to run into burning buildings? And do police officers want to run into areas where there's shooting going on and everyone else is running away?" They do it because they're committed, and they have a job, and they feel like they need to.
It's what their heart is.
I need to be chairman of the Gwinnett County Commission. There are a lot of things that are going to have to be changed, and it just can't be business as usual.
Well, you know, I agree. You have to go where your heart leads you. And I know that your heart's always been in security. And part of the big issue with that county commission is they are in charge of the security of our county financially and, you know, and security-wise. They're responsible people. Well, when you look at all this, what would you say going into it is your number-one priority?
Safety. You know, I've got kids and grandkids that all live in Gwinnett. And regardless of whether we're talking about transportation, increasing retail businesses, industry in Gwinnett County, whatever it might be, it's all reliant on whether or not people feel safe. If they don't feel safe, they're not going to ride buses, trains, or anything else. They're not going to go to the malls at night, and they're not going to do much of anything if they don't feel safe. That has to be the number-one issue because everything, everything evolves around public safety.
Well, I totally agree, and you've got a good background in that. You've got, the connections are the best I've ever seen as far, especially for anybody in the race. Your connections with law enforcement are just superb. I know that, you know, that's a big issue, but there's a lot of other issues that are going on and concerns that are going on. One of the biggest things, I think, in the last, well, several election cycles, and I personally agree it is a big issue, is the transportation issue. We've got to do something, and the matter is, what do we do about it? And what's your position, and what are your thoughts on it?
Well, you know, the first thing is that MARTA was voted down twice.
Yep.
You know, the people pretty much have spoken. There is a small group of folks that would like to see heavy rail come in, and it will benefit a small group. But the way that I look at it is, you know, the Gwinnett, our Gwinnett system needed the $20 million that they got from the federal government. MARTA needed the $300 million that they got from the federal government. And as a businessman, if you were to come to me and say, "Hey, look, I have this one company that I want you to invest in, but they needed 20 million to survive, and I want you to also invest in this other company that needed 300 million to survive, would you put your money in it?" I don't think so. See, transportation, MARTA, transportation systems are all a convenience. Well, there's a point where that convenience is just not worth the money that it costs. And I've heard people say, "Well, you know, we need to bring big industry into Gwinnett County. Look at New York City, look at London." Well, the population of New York City is 23,000 per mile. The population density in Gwinnett County is almost 1,800 per mile. You can see that we couldn't justify heavy rail in Gwinnett County even during the best of times. This is, these are not the best of times. We've got people that are out of work, they lost their jobs, people have lost their businesses, they've gone bankrupt, and we're going to bring in heavy rail that we want our kids and grandkids to end up paying for for the next 30-plus years and add another tax? I don't think so. That just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, what would you, what would be your suggestion on maybe the best way to deal with that, to go into it?
I think we need microbuses. I think we need a lot more buses. We need small bus stops where people can go and get on a bus instead of having to sit around and wait for an hour for a bus to show up. We can use special needs buses. And the thing about it is, if we go to microbuses, which are a lot cheaper, we're going to be able to give some other people some jobs because we're going to have to have drivers for those microbuses.
And service people at your lots.
It's going to be a lot less expensive, it'll be a lot more efficient, and I think that's the way for us to go. You can add buses, you can subtract buses, you can add small bus stops, and you can subtract them as well. Once you get MARTA and heavy rail in, you're locked in. You have very little choice at that point.
The options aren't that many.
No.
Well, you know, and that's a good thought. There's been a lot of talk about the buses and the specific bus lanes that are all coordinated with the lightings and all. And that's worked in a lot of places as well, so really, that seems like a pretty good option. You know, there's a lot of depressed areas. One of our biggest is Gwinnett Place Mall. Gwinnett Place Mall is right in the, literally, the heart of Gwinnett County. It all kind of stems out from there. Everything runs through it with your major thoroughfares right here. What are you looking at as a possibility to deal with the rejuvenation of that area?
Well, you know, when federal monies were passed out, I think the Gwinnett Mall got $900,000 somewhere in that neighborhood, which wasn't really enough to do much with it. And from what I understand, the owners of the mall aren't really being very cooperative. But what has to happen in this rejuvenation process, not only at the mall, but some of the depressed areas around Gwinnett County, is we're going to have to start out small. I don't care if they have to give free space to somebody at the mall. We need to develop, get some excitement going. You know, you don't want to go somewhere where it's always empty. And people aren't going to go to the mall if it's always empty. So we need to get something going there, even if it's a freebie. But there's a lot of space there that could be used for training, for, we could do law enforcement training. You know, I have some friends that used to be shop teachers. Well, as we know, there are no more shop classes in Gwinnett. Well, that's a skill that would help people get to work. Shop, wood shop, metal shop, and the other things. Well, we could start some kind of classes in the mall. There's plenty of space to do that. So we really just have to think outside the box. Some of these depressed areas, we need to start working on them because it'll give people hope. It'll increase their self-esteem, and that's important. And along that line, talking about crime prevention, well, you know, I have a Care for Cops charity with seven chiefs on my board. It would not be difficult at all to get these chiefs and myself as chairman of the county commission to start going to all these little neighborhood groups and civic groups and developing some communications, which I don't believe has happened in the past. We can't just send a memo out, "Oh, here's what we're going to do." We need to talk to people. We need to find out what their ideas are and explain what our ideas and thoughts are, and we have to get them to the point where they're going to buy into our program. And it's the same thing we do in big business and in industry. You don't just tell your employees, "This is what we're going to do." You give them the thoughts, you get their thoughts, and you convince them through education why this is better, and they'll buy into it. We're going to have to do the same thing in some of these areas. It hasn't happened before.
Well, I know communication is probably the most important thing that a lot of people forget. It's very important in a business. If you can't communicate with your people, you can't communicate your message, you don't get collaboration and cooperation. And that is what our county really needs, is that steady line of communication so that the people within the county can collaborate, can cooperate, and they get a say-so in what's actually happening in their county. There's been a lot of times, and we've had some really good administrations in this county. I'm not going to knock that. There've been some great ones. But there's been some times when the communication was a little slack. And it is, you know, that's something that we need regardless of who's there. There's got to be better communication, not a "my way or the highway" type idea, which a lot of MARTA's been. That's where it's really been, it's gotten down. When you have the majority of the people saying no, and you've got a few people saying yes, and then they push it through to make people, you know, it's just one of those things where the message, if they really want it and they see the benefits, the communication has not gotten the message there.
And the communication has to come from the top. We can't just pick somebody and say, "Hey, we want you to go talk to these people in this neighborhood." The people that are running the county, the police chiefs, the chairman of the county commission, they're the ones that need to be out there talking to these different groups.
Decision-makers.
Yes.
The people that, when you do come to collaboration, there's actually the ability to make it happen. And I'll say things like Charlotte, she's always been good about communication. She was always good at it. She got in there and did. But there's, there's just a lot of things that can happen in this election term that can go sideways.
Well, there's been a lot of wasted money, you know.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, we could talk about one building, and we could talk about the stadium, we could talk about a lot of things. But when you spend $40 million on a building, the one at Jimmy Carter in '85, in hopes of it becoming a MARTA station, and then MARTA gets voted down, now what do you do with that building? By the time that thing's paid for, it's going to cost probably $55 million. All right? Now, what are they doing? They're scrambling, trying to figure out what to do with this building instead of concentrating on all these other issues that they really need to be looking at.
It was doing pretty good as a movie set and promoting the movie industry, but that's kind of gone south. Zoning, that's an important issue because there's, that's something that's ever-changing, ever-growing, ever-shrinking in some places, but ever-changing in the county. And a lot of attitudes are changing about zoning. A lot of them from the old school aren't changing. So you've got a mix of both throughout the county. What are you, what's your approach to the zoning issues, and what do you see there?
Well, I have several people talking to me, you know, frequently about, "Why are there so many apartments in Gwinnett County?" And it's not just apartments, but, you know, we have zoning requirements and regulations, and they need to be, they're like some of our laws. You know, people say, "Well, let's make another law." Let's, you know what? We already have a law on the books. So we need to start enforcing our zoning requirements and regulations. We keep putting apartments in there, and yeah, it's going to benefit a few people. It creates more traffic, there's no doubt about that. But whether or not it's financially beneficial in the long run for the county, I doubt it. So we need to look at the zoning requirements. This is not the city of Atlanta. This is Gwinnett County, and it needs to stand on its own. I believe that Gwinnett County can be a shining light to other counties. You know, people come from all over the country to check our jail because of the programs that we have at the Gwinnett County Jail. Well, why can't people come from other counties and say, "Wow, let's look and see what they're doing at Gwinnett. They're doing some things right. Let's find out how, why, and how they're doing them." And I believe that. But it's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take somebody that understands how to get things done, which, you know, I've been doing for almost 50 years. You know, I had a fellow tell me, he says, "You know what? You can't get elected because you don't understand county politics." And I told him, I said, "Well, do you really think county politics are that much different than corporate politics?" And he said, "Well, you don't, you know, you don't know the Gwinnett County budget." And I says, "Well, you know what? I can read a P and L. Doesn't matter how many zeros are on the end, and I can look at a balance sheet. I don't have to understand the Gwinnett County budget. I only need to be able to read it and decipher whether it's real or not." You know? So there are a lot of things that are in business that will work in the county, but we have to implement those. I can implement those.
Well, a lot of it has to do with motivation. Some people are not motivated to make change, and some people are. And I think that's one of the things that, Gwinnett has been slow in making changes over the years. We've sped up a lot the last 10 years and maybe 15 years. It's gotten a lot faster and are a lot more willing to change, I'll put it that way. The change, the willingness to change has been there. A lot of that comes from the county itself becoming younger, a lot more young people. You know, the diversity of the county is unbelievable. It's probably the most diverse county. They say it's what America is going to look like as we go through 20 years from now, America, we'll look at Gwinnett County. How do you see the diversity of our county either helping or in some ways hindering, but helping our county grow?
Well, as I, you know, as I told the group the other day, I said, "What we really need to do is we need to start looking at issues and quit voting on party lines. We need to look at the issues that are best for our families, and that's how we need to vote. Doesn't matter whether it's a Democrat or Republican. If adding taxes is good for your family and you don't mind, then you can vote whichever way. If it's a Democrat and they want more taxes and they want to spend more, and that's fine, and that'll benefit your family, then you vote for a Democrat. If you want to tighten up the budgets, if you want to make sure that money is spent in the right place, in the right way, and it happens to be a Republican that is going to do that, well, then you vote for a Republican, whether you voted Democrat for the last 10, or 15, or 20 years. We need to vote on issues that are best for our family, not on party lines."
I think one of the most important things, and I've been trying to stress it for this whole season, this whole cycle, is for people to be informed. You know, before you vote, don't vote before, you know, "This is how my daddy always voted, how my mama always voted, how my sister's voting, how my brother's voting." My cousin, three times removed, says, "This is the only way to vote." Go out and do some reading, do some inspection, do multiple sources. Listen to people on the right, people on the left. Come find out what the truth is, and then make an informed decision when you vote. Because if you don't make an informed decision and you just shoot from the hip, you really have no right to complain about the outcome.
See, and that's, you know, that's basically the job of the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, is to, one, listen to what all of the other board members are saying, listen to what the citizens are saying, gather all the information that you can, and try and make an informed decision. Because there's not a lot of room for mistakes in these days. They get very expensive, and they're very hurtful to a lot of folks.
Now, we discussed it before we were on the air, that probably the most important two positions in Gwinnett County right now, vote, for vote, is the sheriff's office and, of course, the chairman of the county commission. Because when the decisions come right down to it, they probably made the biggest, they make the biggest decisions, most important decisions, at least establish the direction those decisions will be discussed and go in, the whole county government.
Well, see, this is, that's a, you know, that can be a very good example. If we have a Democratic sheriff, they've already said they're going to get rid of the 287G program.
Correct.
All right? Now, you're the citizens, and you're interested in safety and crime prevention and everything else. Well, the fact of the matter is, first of all, it's very misleading. People think if you're an illegal immigrant, it doesn't matter where you came from, whether it's China or Mexico or anywhere else. If you're an illegal in this country and you get arrested for, let's say, a misdemeanor, and you go to the jail, they think, "Oh, you're automatically going to get," you know, they're going to call ICE and you're going to get deported. That's not true. That's what a lot of people think, and that is not the case. Now, if you're an illegal and you commit a felony and you go to the jail, they're probably going to call ICE, and you're going to get deported. Now, you say, "Well, why is that good for crime prevention?" All right? So you're a citizen of Gwinnett County, and, you know, there are all these immigrants that commit crimes. If you're going to commit a crime, would you rather go to Gwinnett County and commit that felony when there's a chance of you being deported? Or would you rather go to Fulton County or some other county where you don't have to worry about being deported? The 287G program is a very strong crime deterrent. And if you look at that, if you're a citizen and you strictly look at that from the standpoint of your family being safe or not, you have to agree with that. Now, and if you know that a Democrat's going to get rid of that program, which is good for your family, and a Republican is not going to get rid of that program, which is good for your family, I don't care if you voted Democrat for the last 20 years. You've got to go with the Republican because it's best for your family.
Yeah, well, we talked about motivation a while ago, and that has a lot to do with motivation of where you commit those crimes. And, you know, and I agree, a lot of people don't realize that somebody goes in and shoplifts something that's a minor thing, and they go in, they get pulled into jail, get arrested for that misdemeanor. It's not, it's not something they're going to get deported for, whether they're legal, illegal, whatever. You know, the bottom line is, it's the people that are really committing the heinous crimes, the felonies, the extreme felonies. Those are the people that we don't need, we don't want. Those are the people that need to be deported and sent back to their own country. Let them commit their felonies there. Let them commit the homicides, the rapes, the burglaries, and stealing everybody's stuff in the car hijackings and stuff like that. Let them go somewhere else and do that. Now, I'll say that it's not all illegal that do that sort of crime, but a lot of, the higher majority of those illegals do commit those crimes. So it's not the highest of the crimes that are being committed by them, but, you know, you get my drift. You know, the bottom line is, they need to be, they need to be removed from our country, sent back to their own country, and go from there.
Well, charity starts at home, and I feel like Gwinnett County is home. So we have to do what's best for the citizens in Gwinnett County.
Gwinnett first.
Yes, that's not a selfish attitude, you know? Family comes first.
Absolutely. Well, where do you believe, why do you believe that you can actually get anything done, all this stuff going on?
Well, I believe that we're in a crisis situation. And in business and industry, I've handled a lot of crises. As a matter of fact, I can teach a crisis management program. So, and it has to be somebody that's able to do that. It has to be somebody that can get people to sing out of the same hymnal, so to speak. And I can do that. I've done that in business, and there's no reason why I can't do that with the county. The programs that I have make a lot of sense when we talk about getting police chiefs and myself to go out to these neighborhoods. Well, I have a charity called Care for Cops, and I have seven police chiefs on my board. I know most of the chiefs in Gwinnett County, and I've worked with most of the departments in Gwinnett County. So it would be fairly simple for me to really get those kind of programs going and develop that kind of communication and get people to understand what really needs to happen. And so it's going to, you know, people are going to have to make some sacrifices. There's no question about that. Are they financial? Maybe not. They might have to change the way they do some things, you know? And it's just like, you know, there are a lot of people, there are a lot of companies right now, they've got their employees working from home. Well, you know what? They may reduce their overhead, get smaller office space, smaller manufacturing space, whatever it might be, and let those people continue to work at home. What they're going to do is they're going to look at productivity. If they can get the same productivity or close to the same productivity and save a lot of money on overhead by letting people work at home, they're probably going to make that decision.
Yep. Well, we're about out of time. In fact, we are, but I've got one more question I want to ask, and I think it's probably a very important question. What actually differentiates you between you and your opponent in this race?
Well, Nicole's a real sweetheart. She's in my rotary, and she's going to pull a lot of votes, there's no question about it. But it's going to take, it's going to take somebody that has dealt in for pretty serious situations. She was a director of outreach. A lot of people really like her, there's no question about that. It's going to take somebody that has a lot of experience, a lot of crisis management abilities, and the ability to pull things along, that they're going to have to have a lot of contacts in law enforcement to really get things to where we want them to be to make Gwinnett what it can be.
Well, I agree. Experience makes a lot of difference, and experience in what areas. And I agree. And I agree, Nicole is a sweetheart, great person, but I'll leave that up to the people out there to decide which way they think is the best way to go. But I sure do appreciate having you on, David. We've tried to get here for quite a while, and we finally made it, and I really appreciate you coming on.
It's always good to see you, Rick.
You take care, buddy. Well, thank you for joining us on Case in Point, presented by Paradigm Security Services. Again, remember to hit that subscribe button, and remember that you can join us live every Wednesday at 11:30 in the morning, or you can listen to our show anytime you want by going to businessradiox.com, clicking on the Gwinnett Studio, and then click on Case in Point. Join us next week at 11:30, and we will talk with business leaders about their businesses and related security issues in today's world. Thanks again to my guest, David Post, and for our producers, Mike and Amanda. And again, I'm Rick Strawn, and remember, at Paradigm Security Services, we cover more than just your assets.